Called to order the City Council Special Meeting for City of East Grand Forks, Wednesday, July 5th, 2017 is now five o'clock. Executive Assistant Police Call Roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Goldstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Parkchowinski.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Tweetin.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does the term quorum. Number one administrative hearing on parcel number eighty-three dot zero zero five six five dot zero zero to determine if it is a public nuisance. Mr. Goldstead.
Thank you. Essentially, this is a matter that is dealing with a property located at four twenty-one Fourth Avenue Northeast in East Grand Forks. I believe Mr. Magano is here to address the council. He was provided with a notice that his property was a public nuisance according to a number of the different ordinances of the City of East Grand Forks. He was invited to approach and provide evidence contesting the nuisance. Once he's done, I'll provide the council with the different reports that were filed in the photographs. And then this body will be required to make a decision either today or take it under advisement and provide Mr. Magano with the decision on whether or not a public nuisance is in existence. If it is in existence, if it's determined as such, a reasonable time from this date would be also allotted Mr. Magano to, am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, you got it right.
To try to come into compliance. If not, we would then submit some reinforcement to the court to require that it be brought into compliance with code. If this council determines that it's not a public nuisance, then it would just be found in his favor and then it would resolve at that time. Okay, so Mr. Magano.
Well, I know there's a lot of mess there. I know there has been for your last year. It all started a few years ago with me doing bikes for kids and donating them, giving them to kids in area. And people realizing that I was doing this, so they're dropping off bikes. And then I was doing it for cleanup week and everything, and then it started to really snowball into something that got out of hand for me, and I'll admit it. There's numerous times I got it cleaned up to what was considered acceptable. And then people would drop off items into my yard in front, everything. I guess this year I have come to the point of, if I catch people or telling anybody if I see him dropping off bikes, no, I don't want it. I can't handle it. It's causing me too much trouble, too much strife. It's getting my person in trouble, and I do not need this. In the last few weeks after I've been issued this notice, I've considerably cleaned up on the outside of my fence and organized more inside my yard. I have got a wire fence around, I mean a metal fence around my yard and putting it into where it's not so visible to people coming by just by driving by. It's more over into, I've got shrubs in front of my house, so it's kind of more behind that until I get it cleaned out of there. I don't know how far to go into this, but I have been seeking help with hoarding issues, major depression, and seeing counsel for that. Been seeing somebody to help me through that, and it's helped considerably, I think. I guess I'd like to just continue forward with this and work at it at a more frugal And I see better days ahead, just to take care of it and not let it get there again. I know my wife wanted me to have her come up here and say a few words if that's okay with you gentlemen, or I don't know if she wants to say anything.
Certainly.
The real issue is my husband has a hoarding problem. It's caused a lot of stress in our marriage, and until this year, probably about a couple months ago, have we really addressed the issue with me and him and our family. Like he said, we are seeking help from social services as well as he's going to counseling for it. This is not a problem on hoarding that you just change like that. So until two months ago, he never really admitted that he had a problem. Like I said, it's caused a lot of stress in our marriage and in our family life. My kids have been impacted as well by this. So it's a process that we're really now starting to deal with. So I ask you guys that you do allow him to have some time with it because he really has been working hard through this, but it's not gonna just happen overnight, and it's not something that I can help him through. It's a mental thing, and I can't deal, I can't help him with it. I would just love to put a bin in there and just throw it all away, but I can't do that because that's not gonna really help him, because it's just gonna end up back the same way. So, thank you.
Question I maybe have is timeline that you think in your mind that would take to clean the rest of the stuff inside the fence. You know, you said you're organizing, you want to throw some of that away or all of it, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
What'd be the, I mean, in your assessment of timelines, what's there? What would be an acceptable or in your mind?
You know, unfortunately, I don't have a psychiatrist to say how long that takes because I've been wishing this away for the last two years. So, I don't know. I mean, the summer, I see him getting a lot of the stuff done. I mean, if you could just throw it all away, that would be happy to me, but I don't know that that mentally is something that's a good idea for him. He's gotta be able to be okay with throwing it away, or there's something weird that I don't understand. So I've never personally talked with the therapist on, you know, how long it should take a person to get rid of this. My ideal is to have it gone by the end of the summer.
I mean, what do you think?
My avenue of getting rid of the items is I, last year I sent, just to get rid of them, I sent three, four hundred, four hundred bikes over into Africa. Liberia, I mean Liberia, Lebanon into an area over there, because that's what they depend on to go, mowers, generators, whatever I could. And I sent them, I got a guy that takes them and sends them, puts them on, takes them down to the cities, loads them up on cranes and puts them on. I don't know. I don't know what he does. And it's a slow process because he can only take so much of the time, because he's only got a storage area that he can hold so much before the truck comes from the cities to clear out his area.
I guess.
I mean, I'd like to have it done before the end of the month. Me personally, before the end of July. Because I drive school bus, I drive for Triangle, Coach Service, and I mean, I do numerous other things that maybe, I mean, it's just, it's just, you don't understand, I mean, you probably don't understand the process. It's harder than you think. You walk out there and you see this overwhelming thing, and it's kind of like, damn, I'll be honest with you, you know?
That's why I asked, I didn't know what, I mean, if you had.
That's totally up to you guys. I'll just have to, whatever you guys come up with as a plan, or?
I don't want it to be unreasonable, unreachable. And that's the thing is with me is I want to make sure that.
A lot of avenues, you, you know, there's been a lot of leeway of things, I feel, but there's also been other conflicts with other issues too.
And also want you to know that with our actions is something that we, you know, as a council, you know, we're talked to numerous times by citizens, and it's nothing that we're signaling out for that, you know, what's going on there. And that, you know, I understand, I'm glad that you're seeking that help and understanding it and working everything out, and hopefully that, you know, going forward, that it doesn't underscore you.
That makes it, that statement makes it hard for me because you got, I've got people coming up to me saying, I don't know what to, you're doing such a good thing here. And it's kind of like, well, obviously.
We do have problems. We do have some problems with some, with our neighbors that, you know, I feel like they do call the cops on us for little things when I feel like the cops could be doing other things, like if my son leaves something in the sidewalk because he mowed the lawn, they'll call the cops because they'll have to walk around. So just little stuff like that, little petty stuff is kind of annoying, so I would love if I could just have a meeting with our neighbors or something. I don't know, but, so, we do know kind of where, it's not just from us, it's other people being called from the same neighbor, so we have that, but unfortunately, that's the way that society is. I've given Steven ultimatum too, because I can't live like this myself anymore. So just so you guys know, that does exist too, so. I don't know, we've never done the counseling thing together. He's kind of started the thing on his own, but until we reach that point of doing it together, I just don't know. Sorry, I wish I had more answers for you, but I don't.
Steve Gander.
It's nice to think that the application of our ordinance can help Steve, can help your family, can help the neighborhood, and if this somehow gets resolved in a peaceful way, that's how the process is working its very best. I know it's a hard thing for you to come up and say, you know, I have a little problem in this area, and then for you to come along and say, and his problem has affected our family. That's genuine, and that is how we can go forward probably in the best way to have that information. And so I think to stay kind of locked onto that, as for, you know, you getting this sorted out, and then for yourself, for your family, and for the neighborhood, and all toward, you know, just the ordinance and making sure that you're in good compliance with that. I like it.
I don't see anyone told me, well, why don't you just throw tarps up on your fence and this, make it look a little more like a junkyard. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna hide it.
It's good.
It's not nothing I want to hide. I mean, it's, I mean.
He's admitted it, and that's been the biggest step, so.
Wouldn't bring peace at home either.
Well, our kids have been bullied and stuff like that, so it's definitely a family thing.
Nice.
Dale, you have a question, or?
Yeah, I just, as Steve said, he drives for me, and I just want to verify what he just told you. He started out doing a good thing, and it just skyrocketed, got away from him, is what happened. I've had people come stop by my shop looking for him because they got stuff they want to give to him, you know, and so it just kind of keeps going. I'm after him every day, trust me. He'll vouch for that. Every day he comes in to drive bus, I'm on him all the time. When I was on the council for that short stint, I was on him, told him, you gotta get it cleaned up because they're gonna come after you. So he knows. So, but every time he starts, he gets it looking halfway good, next thing he gets up in the morning, there's another pile of junk in his driveway, you know? So I mean, he's got some other people he's got to contact and let them know that, hey, I can't have this stuff no more as he told you he was doing. The other thing that I know Steve didn't want to bring up, but I'm gonna bring it up, because I think there's an issue there that needs to be dealt with, and I would hope that as a council, that you guys would call the bird dogs off as far as the police department. He come home from Dijki one night, he was going home, and they pulled him over from Dijki, and they asked why. Well, I seen you swerve, so we pulled you over. I mean, I don't need that in my, with my drivers, I don't need that problem. The other thing is, they called him on last night, they called the police department for fireworks. His kid set off fireworks. They were there immediately while they were there talking to his kid, they were setting them off across the street, and they never said one word. So I think there's an issue there that you need to just call him off and tell him. And as he's asking, give him the time, let him do his job. I'm on it constantly. I borrow my trailer every day, I borrow my trailer to try and get stuff out of there, so I'm working with them also to try to help them out. So if you guys can just work with that, I think he'll get through it, and he'll, and his brother also has been, you know, with his trailers and stuff trying to help him out, but, and I think there was, last time I went by, there's a bunch of bikes there again, and it's a good thing what he's doing there, but it's just gotten, it just skyrocketed on him, so, okay?
Thanks, Dale.
Anything from the council? Mr. Goldstead.
I have no questions for him. I was just going to, if he wants to, essentially, I'm just gonna put in the record and he can listen to me, is basically, Doc, Dave Thompson from the police department actually served him the personal notice, which is Exhibit A, or Exhibit One. This issue actually came to our attention back in April of last year, and he was contacted at that time, which is Exhibit Two. It's just the reports indicating what was going on, the photographs of hundreds of bikes at that.
That's why I have this picture right here on there. That's when I was getting them ready, and they were going to Africa, and the guy never showed up. But, and I got this, I got on him. There's, and some of these bikes have dropped off. Hey, you got a good picture of that pickup though, sitting there all summer long and never got a day. You really want me to get a picture of you.
Okay, so anyways, he can make comments afterwards if he would like, and he's got copies of these, these were part of the report. But essentially, we ended up, ended up in April of 2016 where we were having some issues, and he was contacted and asked to have it cleaned up. What ended up happening was it didn't get cleaned up, so in August of last year, he was actually written a citation that he ultimately paid for what they would call a junkyard. But it didn't get cleaned up. So then in November of 2016, which is Exhibit Three, he was contacted again, and again it shows numerous bicycles, lawn mowers, those types of things that are basically strewn in the berm in the yard and along the back garage between the households and the fence. Then, over the winter, essentially, they kind of calmed down because now it's winter, then we received another complaint, so in, he was contacted again in April of 2017 with photographs that were taken showing an issue, same type of issue, both in the, in the yard and along the berm in the front of the house. After he was contacted, that time in May, he did a very good job on cleaning it up, primarily from view and up and down the street, which, there's photographs in here as well that shows the job that he had done cleaning it up. However, where this issue became a problem again is after he had it cleaned up, we have in June of this year, which is Exhibit Five, another complaint which shows the issue. It just snowballed again. We have Exhibit Six, we'll show you all the different photographs of when he was cleaning it up, and then Exhibit Seven shows the after, which, which really shows that you did a nice job on getting the outside of the yard cleaned up. But the backyard is still, actually, it's a safety risk of, well, it was, it was considered a safety risk by David Thompson. He's got a synopsis in here where he went through, and he actually explained to Mr. Magano that, you know, he would be afraid if there was a call for safety, fire, rescue, ambulance to try to get through there because there is so much, so many bikes, so many lawn mowers, so much belongings all over the backyard. Exhibit Eight is the synopsis of the conversation that Mr. Thompson had with, or Officer Thompson had with Mr. Magano. Basically, he's trying, you know, he admits that he's trying to clean it up, that he's admitted that he's having some issues getting it done, that there is a problem, and he's working on it. Then Exhibits Nine through Sixteen, the reason we're back here is, is because of the problem. Now, he has in fact cleaned it up. These are recent photographs that he's, that Nine through Sixteen, which shows that he's done a nice job on the berm and that area, and he has straightened out, straightened up the backyard to a certain degree, but there's still, I'd say hundreds of bikes or more, lawn mowers, those types of things in the backyard. So these reflect, as of today, what the condition of the property is today. It'd still be our position that the, as the city attorney and as the city, that the, that there is a public nuisance that's in place, and specifically a safety issue, whether it's regarding people having to get through the backyard if necessary, or even it's not much different than in a woodpile, where it, there's so much stuff back there for, and I'm not saying you have them, but I'm saying where housing for rodents and squirrels and those types of things, which also cause problems for the neighborhood. So I'm going to, if I may, submit these to Megan for a record on the city's behalf, and then Mr. Magano can make some comments if he wants to refute. I will state though, he does, he, he seems to have good intentions, however, the reason we're back here is, it was just in May that he did a nice job on cleaning it up for the most part, and then within two, three weeks, if he said that he gave three to five hundred bikes away, there was three to five hundred bikes still there.
No, there wasn't.
Well, I didn't count them. There was a lot of bikes still there, front yard, backyard.
I asked you this through the summer, I said I gave away that many.
But if you, so those are for you to, you can pass them by, take a look, and then make a decision at your leisure, either today or take it under advisement, and we will have you issue a, issue a decision at, to Mr. Magano. Thank you.
Mr. Parkchowinski.
One more question for, just procedurally, would there be a way that with a phone call, he could call, say Public Works, when a pile of unwanted material shows up in his driveway, and a front end loader take it out? He didn't put it there. It'd be like someone else just dumping something off anywhere. Would there be any possibility of that, so it doesn't have to go into his possession, doesn't have to go behind the fence? Is there any chance for something like that?
Jason, I, I guess it'd be if you have the capability to do that, and what, do we, would we, do we have a scrap metals place that we do, and do we, is there a cost to get rid of that?
Would there have to be a fee to this resident, or if he, it wasn't his stuff, it just showed up unwanted on his drive?
I guess we, I don't know.
And I guess I don't have an answer to that. I think the biggest issue that I would have at this point is I believe that Mr. Magano in the past has contacted people and said, this is what I'm doing, I'm recycling bikes, I'm doing these things. He needs to make a conscious effort to contact those individuals and say, hey, don't drop off anything at my house anymore. But it's, it, I mean, it, if anybody has gotten by there, and I, and I understand where he's saying it's gotten out of control, but I mean, when it's gotten out of control, you've got bikes spilling over into the street, they're off on the curbs, I mean, they're, they're just everywhere. And, and it becomes, it becomes not only for a parking issue, but a public safety issue that way. He's done a much better job, but there were bikes and such on the sidewalks, transfer cases in the middle of the sidewalk, you know, those types of things, and it just needs to be cleaned up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank the Maganos for coming up here tonight, and especially your wife. It must be difficult for you to stand in front of the public and address this council on this problem, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate the progress that you've made on your yard, and as the attorney said, it's progress, but it's not enough. We, we feel that there's, there's more that needs to be done before you're not in violation of our ordinance. So I would encourage you to, to work on that. The thing I would warn you is that there are further steps that the city can take if you don't comply, and there could, the lawyer would have to spell those out, but there could be court orders where we could go in and seize your property and just get rid of it if it got to the point where you wouldn't voluntarily comply, so. But again, I do thank you for being here and hope that you continue to make progress. As far as what you said about neighbors calling and complaining to the police and the city council members, if I were them, I'd be doing the same thing. If you were my neighbor, I'd be in the police station every single day saying, I want this cleaned up because you're harming my property, that this sort of a nuisance next to an adjoining property or a neighbor across the street harms them. Makes it very difficult if they want to sell their house, and if someone looks across the street and sees that, they're gonna, they're gonna walk away. So, and in defense of our police department, they are only responding to the pressure that they've gotten from council members and staff to get this problem taken, taken care of. So I would get, I would suggest, I'm fine with taking this under advisement and not taking any action tonight, or, that's just kind of how I feel. As long as there's progress being made, I'm willing to be patient as long as we don't go backwards. Thank you.
Mr. Tweetin.
I'd like to make a comment. Frankly, your yard is the most disgraceful thing that I've ever seen. I've lived here near all my life, except for three years in the service. Now, if your conduct is going to continue, I'm going to push to have your property condemned. We can't have anything like that. You destroy the life of all the neighbors. How could they ever sell their property with something like that? Now, we're not going to tolerate it. We've got some others we're gonna clean up too, so you're not being made an example of. But frankly, I'm disappointed that, what you're gonna do, and you're not gonna be able to pull it in the yard temporarily. I tell you, I've been all over Europe, and I've never seen, in most of the United States, and I've never seen anything so disgracefully well-maintained. You owe an apology to all your neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Now, we're going to take it under advisement, and you're, you're gonna live up to what we decide.
Yes, sir.
There is a place where we keep people cooled off. It's called a jail. They learn to obey the law. You're flaunting the law of this city and state. No further comments at this time, Mr. President.
Let me, can I say something?
Sure.
I, in my opinion, I think what you're doing is, is progress. I think you're making an effort, and I appreciate that. I think that what me, speaking for myself, would like to take it under advisement and move forward and to make sure though that, if we're taking it under advisement and making sure that you keep going forward, I hope that you do that. I don't want to come back and say, well, you know, we shouldn't have took it under advisement, we should have took action. I don't want to do that. I don't want to come back here and have to rehash this, and I, and I hope you don't either.
I hope you don't.
And, but I appreciate the efforts that you've made, and I think that going forth, if you keep moving forward, getting rid of stuff, I think it's gonna be a good thing. So I do appreciate it. Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to start by saying, I think one of the things I hold very strongly is property rights, and I think that we, as council members, as governments, need to tread lightly when it comes to these types of issues, because, because the balance is easily thrown off in the, in the wrong way. It's, it's a tough issue. These type of issues are always, are absolutely my least favorite thing about being on council because, because they're not black and white, because they're qualitative, not quantitative. Obviously, I've, I've been by the property, I think some- Obviously, I've been by the property, I think there's certain definitions that if, you know, you see it when you, or you know it when you see it, those type of things, but I just, I'm very, I think we need to be very careful, because one's person's nuisance is another person's, you know, overgrown garden, or, you know, I just, I'm not saying that this isn't a nuisance, I've just, I wanna be clear that it's a fine line. And the second reason I don't like it is because we've, we've kind of seen these a few more times lately, and maybe it's because it's, it's become more open, maybe because we've talked about it more, but, and there's probably always been people that have suffered from hoarding disorders, or all those type of things, but we've seen it. I know Nancy's office has seen it quite a bit, I'm sure the chief's department has seen it quite a bit. And, and the reason why I don't like it is because it's, it's hard for me as a council person to figure out what's, what's the best path forward, is it, like you said, I'd love to just come in with a clam and grab a bunch of them, take it out. Doesn't get at the root of the problem, it doesn't get to a permanent, or even a long-lasting solution. I would be very, I'd be willing to take this under advisement and work towards putting forth a timeline for things to get done, or benchmarks, or those type of things. But I'd also like, at some point in time, maybe a briefing by Polcone, you know, Public Health, or someone to come in and talk to us about what, what would be the best strategy going forward. Because really, we don't, I mean, thinking about how we go forward, I mean, what we're being asked to do is either go in and take it all away with no real guarantee that it's gonna keep going. And obviously, you know, Henry said, there's, you know, criminal penalties, you know, all those different type of penalties, we can move forward. I don't know if it gets to the root of the problem. And, you know, like you guys have said, you've done counseling, there's counseling, and then there's action, right? They need to be married. And I just, I don't, I don't have the expertise, like you said before, you're not a psychiatrist, you don't know those type of things. I would, I would really like to see someone from, that is expert in this, and maybe has a community perspective, be able to come in and suggest potential ways for it. Because I, like I said, we've seen this a few times now, where we've, we've tried to deal with things, and it just seems like the only tools we have are either so draconian, and it's go in and, you know, take over, or we don't have any tools, it's just let it go, let it go, let it go. For some of those things, it has to be admitted, it has to be, you know, dealt with at the personal level. But we do have, we have a responsibility to all, all the members of that community, which some of them are annoyed at the other ones, but we have a responsibility to all of them. So I guess if we're gonna take it under advisement, I would say, you know, take it under advisement with, with the goal of making the council and the city better by trying to figure out ways we should handle this in the future, and maybe putting forth a timeline when we expect certain benchmarks to be hit. I guess that's...
Personally, if you're gonna take it under advisement and not make a decision one way or another, I would say that I would have somebody from the city go check up on it in two weeks, and then 30 days, and then if not, have it back on the calendar for a decision.
I'd even go beyond that timeframe, if there's a risk of relapse. And like any of these things, there's always, you might go great for a week, or two weeks, or a month, but how about in three months, or six months? And so the longer you go without relapsing into that tendency, I think is gonna be a good thing. So I'd love to see it, even a year, a year's worth of, you get it good in a much shorter timeline, but at some interval, we're gonna check up on it for that whole year, as a favor to you, as a favor to your neighbors, your family, to help accountability-wise for you, whoever that is inside the city. I'd like to see it go out a year.
Well, and we could do that, but we could, we would end up having to determine that it's a nuisance first. You'd wanna have some type of a timeline on it, because one of, one of the things that ultimately happens with these types of properties is, is we end up going and getting a court order. And that court order is basically an injunction. And, and one, it requires that the property be brought into code and compliance, and two, we can end up having a permanent injunction in place to where, if in fact it happens again, we're not having to go back into the court to do it again, we just have the authority to go clean it up. And, and so I understand where you're saying, check up on it, but at some point, we need to make a, make a decision, you know, one way or another, that yes, it is a nuisance, or it's not a nuisance, and then how it's gonna be taken care of. And if you wanna say that it's a nuisance, but what we're gonna do is, we're gonna give you two weeks, 30 days, you know, you know, these different reviews, we do have, because it is a misdemeanor, you have a one-year timeframe, that you can essentially, from the decision that it's a nuisance, to, to make sure it's in compliance.
I know you made your, you gave yourself a timeline to us here tonight, end of July. I mean, is that just a date you threw out that you thought would appease us, and that, or is that something you wanna strive for yourself to get that done?
That's something I wanna strive for myself. I mean, you've got the pictures, you know, in the last week or two.
No, I'm just asking, just to make, you know...
Yeah, I've just busted to get it done to what I was informed needed to be done, and I was wrong, the outside of my property. And where you couldn't, I mean, it's where you couldn't see it from just, you know, somebody driving by, they go, "Oh, gosh," you know, you know, because it was pretty bad, right by the fence and everything, because everything got pushed right into the fence, just to, as Mr. Tweetin said, you know...
End of July, end of July, would that include the backyard? That's what I guess is where I was going.
Yes, it should. I mean, if that's, if that's what you want, I mean, that's, I think I can do that personally.
I don't want this to be set up where all of a sudden you get to that point where it's not gonna happen, you know. I would appreciate if there's something does come up, that you do contact Mr. Galstead or the city administrator person, you know, to keep in contact. I don't want it get to a point where we have to take action again, and, you know, there were circumstances, or something did happen, you know, but I want you to be, you know, accepting of the timelines that you're setting up yourself even, to do that. I know it's, and I appreciate that you're wanting to get it done, and wanting to make sure that it's, you know, today's July 5th, so I mean, that's just something I wanna make sure, and, you know, that's okay and fine with you, and even, you know, if you want to, if you have a comment, ma'am?
Yes, I do. I mean, Steve, I'm an owner of this land, okay? I have it on mine. If it got to the point where it was that bad, I would literally get a dumpster and throw all the crap away. But like you said, it's not that simple of an issue, and I understand people have rights, and Steve will admit to it, and I'm sorry, but all I'm, again, asking is for more time for him to get. And if you guys come up with the date and say, "This is the date I give you," then that's the date that I'll have the crap out of there, whether he has it out of there or not. Because I am an owner, and I'm a parent, and my kids deserve to have a yard just as much as the neighbors deserve to have clean property rights. I am trying to help Steve through this process, so it doesn't continue again. And there is a lot of people that have this issue in this world, it's just a lot of people don't admit to it. But I am a rightful owner. This is against Steve. I am the wife of Steve. I am not a hoarder, I am a thrower. It would be gone, but...
And the reason I asked, with the end of July, is what he made the comment to that. I'm not saying...
I would like him to, if you guys set a date, that's fine, because if he couldn't comply with that, I am so tired of it, that I would go get a dumpster, and I would throw it all away. So I'm just saying, you guys can set a timeframe as whatever, we're at a point where it's gonna end up in the trash.
Let's just go August 1st.
You know?
But that is a date.
I'm fine with that, that's why I was saying that. He's setting end of July for himself, that's where I was going down the road I'm going at, is that if he's comfortable with that, getting it done, you know, and him doing it on his own timeline, that it's acceptable for us for that timeline, that's where I'm getting it. If it's, if we would've said end December 31st, I would've said no.
I know, but talking with, you know, Ron, speaking and stuff, this is against Steve, but I'm also a owner, and I don't want my property seized, because I will deal with it on my own. I'm just trying to help my husband deal with his problem, because it is causing a lot of stress.
I get it.
I understand property, but it's a bigger issue than that.
No?
It's a much bigger issue than that.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you. One question I have, and it gets to kind of the problem I have with the issue again, is we've talked about "it," right, is, "I'll get it done by August 1st." Can we have some sort of agreement to what "it" is? Is it no bikes? Is it, you know, half the bikes? Is it, is it whatever? I guess, and then I have another question after that. Is there something that we're gonna define as, "This is what we expect"? I, I'm on board with August 1st, or whatever timeline we wanna choose, but you need to say, "Here's the timeline, this is what we expect."
Mr. Galstead, is the ordinance clear enough to just lean back on the ordinance for what "it" is?
This, this, essentially at this point, from my standpoint, 100 bikes in the backyard isn't it, okay? Now, if he's got 10 bikes in the backyard that he can work on 10 at a time, you know, or less, that's, that's a different story, but none of these bikes are being used personally. You know, it's a different story if I was using these bikes personally. It's become almost to the point, and of a, of a, a home, home-related business, you know? So essentially, right now, it's, the bikes are inoperable, that I can tell, most of them. And then he, then what do you do? Then you replace them, right? And then you get parts and fix them up and give them away? I don't know if you're giving them away, selling them, or whatever, but it would be personal use versus what's there now.
And then, I guess my other follow-up was, in the, in the nuisance complaint, you cited the ability for public employees to be able to access, namely, police? Is that, is that a measure of nuisance, according to your...
Yeah, actually, public safety is an issue, and it's a safety factor, it's, there's a couple of different types of nuisance. There's health and safety, and, and having access for those types of things is, is a nuisance.
So if it's difficult for the police to get in my yard...
Or impossible.
Paramedics.
Paramedics, police, fire, those types of, those types of safety issues.
We're gonna be writing a lot of tickets then.
I'm just saying, there's a lot of places around town that it'd be difficult to get into, so, whether it's just overgrowth of brush, and, and stuff like that, I'm just, I don't think that, for me, that isn't what constitutes a nuisance. I think, obviously, messiness or whatever can be, but I don't know, it's, I don't believe that that's a public nuisance in, for that definition, but others, yes.
Pachivinsky.
I would agree with Mr. Demers that we should have a definition, so we don't do things arbitrarily. That's an impossible standard to meet. But I guess, based on the advice of our attorney, if we do nothing but take this under advisement, then we haven't really declared it a nuisance, so this doesn't have any teeth to force the issue by August 1st. So I, I think we should declare it a nuisance tonight, and give the August 1st deadline in order to get it under compliance, and I think that, that forces the issue. My, one question I have, Mr. Galstead, is if we just take it under advisement, what steps would we have to take? Would we have to have another hearing then, in order to declare it a nuisance, or do we have to reinform them that we're gonna have a hearing?
Well, to take it under advisement essentially would be, this group doesn't have to have another hearing, this group would get together and discuss the options, and, and whether or not, one, it is a public nuisance, and if it is a public nuisance, you make that decision, and then you make the decision on the cleanup, and the timeframes. When I said, "Take it under advisement," it was that you didn't necessarily have to make a decision sitting here today, at this moment in time, if you wanted to review and consider Mr. Magano and his wife's comments and testimony, if you wanted to consider the reports, the photographs that have been presented for you as evidence, and then make a decision whether, one, you believe it's a nuisance, and then, two, if it is, what timeframe and parameters that you're gonna establish, so that he knows when he is in compliance.
Okay. I'm fine with taking it under advisement, under those circumstances then, and setting a deadline of August 1st to...
To get it done.
Yeah, to get it, to get it taken care of.
Do you want an advisement under the motion also?
Yeah.
Do you need it under a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mike, would you make a motion to...
Well, actually, if you take it under advisement, you're just gonna basically say right now, "We're gonna just consider this, and then bring it back."
But I'm asking if you need it under a motion. Do you, and that's a yes, you want it under, okay.
We do need a motion?
Well, if you're gonna take it under advisement, I would like you to move that you're gonna take it under advisement, and then get a decision, then we'll get a decision to Mr. Magano.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second that one.
Any more discussion?
Take it under advisement.
You wanna vote on it? Correct, you wanna...
Yes, please.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Any other discussion or questions at this time? Not, city clerk, please take roll.
Riapeau?
Yes.
Tweetin?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Vetter?
Yes.
Pachivinsky?
Yes.
Motion's carried. entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So we'll, they'll get, they'll make a decision within an...
Anybody, Demers, second by Mr. Tweetin.
Short period of time, and we'll let you know, okay?
Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Motion carried, special meeting is adjourned.
I will, I will let you know by a written document.
Okay.
So am I done now?
Thank you, sir.
And then, and then Steve, I'll have, if you guys want, I'll have copies, I can give you copies of all of those documents that I provided to you. Yep? I'll get your copies of all of that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Call to the city council meeting for CDV's grand forest for Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, is now 5:48. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel, council members Clarence Vetter?
Here.
Mike Pachivinsky?
Here.
Tim Riapeau?
Here.
Henry Tweetin?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Does term call, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council, items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may refer to staff or boards and commissions for research and future council agendas appropriate. If you'd like to address the city council, please come up to the podium to do so. If you come up, please state your name and your address, please.
Greg Maher, 1429 Nate Circle, Southeast. I guess I got some questions and comments about the paving. I wasn't able to make the meeting last week due to work, but I guess my first question would be, why are we in this situation? You know, why is this an argument over the paving? Mark, get on.
Well, I can give you my honest opinion. Opinion that it's between you and your developer. If a developer wants to go back and pay for it himself, and you guys, he divvies up the special assessments to you guys, we'd be fine. It's been a fact that when we went forth on this, stuff got back into it, saying end benefits and all this stuff, that's why we went back and forth and talked about it. So that's why we're in this situation, okay?
Okay, but what happens if we follow the policy? Whether there was gonna be a road there or not, whether side... Whether there was gonna be a road there or not, whether sidewalks are gonna be installed or not, we have our policy. You can't just pass the buck on to the next development. Then that's why specials get outrageous.
If you, if you wanna talk about specials, we can go back and, when original Laurel Drive was done, and talk about what was done, and how it wasn't done, and how it was supposed to be done, and how it was asked to be done by Mr. Peabody, okay? It wasn't done, it was asked to be done by Mr. Peabody that way, okay? So going back and forth in policy, we already went back and forth and talked about how we're gonna look at the policy and developers' agreement, and how we can change it.
Right.
If we could create a street improvement district, that'd be great for the state, we can't, but it's illegal, okay? But to ask the question of why we're in this position has nothing to do with us wanting, we'd love just to say, "Go ahead and do it," but we're trying to be mindful and think about how much it'll cost a special assessment for these people, and try to figure out how we can do it the right way, okay? If I was building down there, and I found out that I had whatever dollar amount for special assessments, I would know that, because I would've looked into it before I built it. And I would know that.
Absolutely, and I did. I looked at the city lots, I looked at those lots. But as I get the paperwork from the city, and we're gonna go with the utilities, and this is what I get from the city...
Did you get Doc a letter stating what was gonna be done?
No, this is what I received from the city with respect.
Okay.
The only way I knew that we paid for the water and the sewer, and, Mr. Henry, I called him up first and asked, "What did it cover?" This was after I paid the lot. Now, coming forth, doing my homework and stuff, I expect the city would be to follow the policy, looking out for the residents. You blame it on the developer. Who looks out for the residents that are gonna buy? Right? You say, "Mr. Peabody came and did this, Mr. Peabody came and did this." Well, you could've said, "Well, this is our city policy. This is how we do it. That's what we've done in the past." But now, it's getting passed, the buck's getting passed us. And, you know, I hear it common, $4,000, you know, it's only $4,000 spread over 20 years. Do you know what $4,000, one payment a year, with 6.5% interest adds up to? It's about $7,000, $8,000. So we're talking more than just $4,000. We have a problem, and that's why it keeps coming up. And we gotta figure out a way to solve it.
Mr. Demers? Can I just get a point of clarification? You said, "The, we're following the policy," I guess, which policy are you, are you saying?
End benefits.
Okay, you mean for new construction?
Yes.
Because our policy, actually, the city, I guess that's a bit of a misnomer, the city policy is, is that, on new construction, is that new construction pays for itself.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yep.
And it, it doesn't talk about end benefit for new construction?
I, I guess in the PowerPoint that's on the city website, it does talk about end benefits, it talks about how cul-de-sacs will be assessed.
That's for reconstruction, but new construction is a hundred percent to the, to the benefited property, which is, it pays for itself, there isn't end benefit for new construction.
They're putting end benefit on my lot, on new construction, and I agree with it.